Really need to ask for public comment. Is there any board comment? No, okay. Our first item, actually our only appointment is, has been withdrawn. So we'll move right on to our solar bylaw, continued discussion. Excuse me. So at the last meeting, the board finalized the solar survey. It was put up, I believe, just before New Year's Eve. We've had about thirty-three responses. And unfortunately, you don't have the fancy Survey Monkey graphics in front of you, but this is all the data from Survey Monkey. I haven't done a lot on the bylaw because what we do with it is going to be dependent on how the board reads the survey and how you choose to move forward. So really, it sounds like for question one, do people support modifying the bylaw to clearly define the depths and types of plantings is a pretty overwhelming yes, eighty-two percent. Where it starts to get muddy in question two is how deep that vegetative buffer is. So one hundred, two hundred and fifty feet are all within statistical significance of each other. They're, you know, one vote apart, so thirty-one or twenty-eight percent depending on which of them it is. So I think really that becomes a judgment call for the board unless you want to continue to try and collect responses. I don't know if you want to go through the whole survey and then talk about it or talk about it question by question.
Is there any need to take it down? Should we, can we let it?
Oh, yeah, we can let it ride.
Okay.
My, but the reason I say that is if you want this to go in the spring, we would need to draft something and wrap it up in the next six or eight weeks. If you want to take your time with it and get it where you, you know, if you want to take the long road, that's, that's fine, too. We can propose it for the fall and spend some more time collecting survey responses and talking about what this might look like, have a listening session, have a, you know, a public meeting of sorts, similar to a public hearing. It's wholly in the board's purview to do it however you would like.
When does the warrant close for the Springtown meeting typically?
Hmm, it closes in, in early March. I have the, the date. I have to. I knew there was one thing I forgot to write down for tonight. It opens on, hmm, I think it opens today or tomorrow.
Oh, it's the sixteenth, March sixteenth.
Yeah, okay. It's the March day after. So, I mean, I think that's pushing it to get something done.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't necessarily think that we need to rush it. I, I would expect that as of right now, solar development is going to slow down just because the SMART program is currently underway. And what I have heard from, from people is that it's essentially full as far as getting fields into the program for the benefit. And that a lot of these large-scale fields aren't going to develop without some sort of incentive. So we have a small period of, of breathing room. It's usually the fall that they announce these programs, rolling into the spring for when they become active. So again, it, it wouldn't be wrong or wouldn't harm the town for the board to say, no, we want to take more time to gather public input. We want to be thoughtful about how we write the bylaw and we want to do it for the fall. Plus, we have some other things, as you'll see later on the agenda, that we certainly can fill up spring with.
So is there something that we can put on the warrant to get something like a straw poll or some, some, some town meeting input? Because town meeting is ultimately what makes or breaks any of these bylaws.
I, I don't think there's anything as, because it's not as, I know that they put the question about the building and the demolition on at the last town meeting as sort of a, let's see what people think. There was a short survey that went with it. I think that you would be better to have surveys at town meeting and have people fill them out. There's a lot of questions in here, and I think putting something like that on a town meeting floor vote would just turn into chaos. It'd be, everyone would want to talk. There'd be a lot of back and forth, which are all great things, but I don't think in the realm of town meeting that's, for, for a non-binding, that's how you want to do it. That's why I think that you're probably better off trying to get people to come here. I think that we had a resident who came to our last meeting and was clearly passionate about the solar bylaw. Clearly, that individual is in contact with other people who feel strongly about it and perhaps reaching out to, to him to say, hey, why don't you come in? We want to talk about what we're proposing and get some feedback from you might be a better approach to it than going to town meeting because if those folks are supportive of the changes you want to make or the majority of the changes you want to make, they may make themselves visible at town meeting to, to push that.
So what did you say? There were thirty-something responses?
Thirty-three.
So if we made a hundred and fifty copies of this same questionnaire for town meeting?
Mm-hmm. We could certainly do that.
I would prefer to get more input before we move forward.
Yeah, I, I think that's completely reasonable.
Okay.
And I also think we should schedule a public meeting, as Adam suggested, just to receive comment. I think we should do the survey and then I think we should also have more public input.
I think that we should also have something like a forward to the one that's distributed at town meeting saying that Planning Board is looking at revising and presenting an updated bylaw for Fall Town Meeting and we will be having at least one open public hearing?
Well, we'll have a public hearing as required by law. But we can have as many listening or discussion sessions as you want. I would suggest that you probably want to schedule something for March or early April to start that discussion and give time to get the, the word out and have some of that information and data so that when you get more survey responses, you can schedule a second one in late May or early June and sort of balance what was said at the, the first listening session, the bulk of responses to any survey that you get back at town meeting, and then have a second session to sort of discuss if there's any disconnect or, or variance between the two.
Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
All right, master plan update. I'm still talking with a couple of engineering firms about their potential possibility to do the population projections. I should have firm answers by our next meeting. So I don't have a, a whole lot of update other than I'm working on finalizing who I think can do those population projections. It's not looking particularly rosy for the engineering firms, but we're talking about what their possibilities of doing that are because it would be nice to have the ball, everything done at one, with one set of people.
Okay. And just to refresh, we applied for the grant and we did not get it?
That is correct.
So we have the fifty thousand?
That is correct.
From capital last year?
Correct. And the board said that they would prefer to have some deliverables prior to requesting additional funding.
Excellent. Minutes approval.
Oh. That's me, too. Just have a couple. You've got November twenty-fifth. I believe this is the one that Marissa had a change that she requested and Marjorie made the change, I think, at the last meeting. Paula, you had a question?
No, I hadn't seen the, the change.
Oh, okay.
I saw it today.
Okay.
And I'm fine with that. A motion to approve the November twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then December ninth?
I do have an issue with the December ninth minutes. And it's relative to the shared driveway on three thirty-five Chase Road. The minutes don't reflect some of the discussion that the board had, and I would like the minutes to add. It was noted that the location of the proposed shared driveway will preserve the existing field stone wall and eliminate an additional wetland crossing on a scenic road.
Okay.
Because it doesn't talk about why we approved it, and I think that's important.
So we can make that change?
Do you want, do you want to?
Do you have, oh, you have it in writing? Even better. I was going to just rewind the tape and listen to it. Do you, is there any objections to that alteration?
I think it's a good idea.
I mean, you can approve them with the change?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of twelve-nine with the change as outlined.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Excellent. Excuse me. All right, committee reports, capital planning. We were put off two times because of weather. We finally got together to discuss, so we finally got, I don't think we saw DPW since the last time we spoke, but anyways, we got a discussion with DPW's requests. I think the total was something less than one point four million requests. We still don't have a total dollar figure for what is available. We went through and we ranked, there were twenty-one separate requests between police, fires, schools, DPW, and the one point four, under one point four million was all the requests less what had been the zero-to-one year from the, was it the TAPPE?
Uh, no, that was the VERTEX.
The VERTEX report. So the VERTEX report had something like four-plus million dollars, I believe, some huge number of capital required in the zero-to-one year was a recommendation, and we did not include those in our ranking. We did discuss all those items and we decided that because of the, the potential relocation, TCP, there's a group that's discussing that and that we really don't know what's going to be the disposition of the old primary to hold off on allocating capital funds towards any of those buildings this year. So we ranked the twenty-one individual items and that's about it. I think those rankings are going to go to the Finance Committee now. And we have one more meeting to get together to organize our minutes, our minutes. A whole bunch of numerous corrections. Anyways, stormwater task force, we are going to be meeting the end, the twenty-third, I believe, of probably the last Thursday of the month of this month. We didn't meet in December. And then the Agricultural Commission, we will be meeting next week. Third Thursday, next week. Oh, no, I'm sorry, this week.
This Thursday.
That's right. TCP building?
We met last Wednesday. We received three proposals from engineering firms interested in bidding on the project. Next step will be interviews, and we hope to do all three interviews in one evening in a couple of weeks. So.
Ambitious.
Stay tuned. Yeah, yeah, it's ambitious for sure, but we're on a timeline if we want to make it to town meeting with any sort of real output, so that's the goal.
Is, is, is it disclosable who the three were?
I could pull it up. I'm pretty sure they put it on.
We can circle that to that.
Web page, yeah.
Open space?
We haven't met. We're still working on our updates to the plan. And land acquisition has not met yet either, since our last meeting.
Now, land acquisition, wasn't that for the Saliba property?
But they haven't acquired the project?
We haven't acquired it yet.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep.
Very good. And MRPC, MJTC, I think are both vacant?
They are.
I am willing to do MRPC. I looked at their meeting schedule. They meet the first Thursday of the month, and I can do that.
Super. So that'll.
But if we get another member, I'm more than willing to relinquish it.
All right, so she's volunteered for this future director's item, right?
Mm-hmm. You can vote now if you would like.
All right, so she has volunteered, so I would take a nomination in a second.
I'll nominate Paula Bertram to serve as our representative for MRPC.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Excellent. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Thank you, Paula.
You're welcome.
So we'll skip back up to director's items, right to the top.
All right, so Tri-Town Estates, this board, close to two years ago now, approved the combination of the last two buildings into a singular building. I have heard from the developer, they are in the process of finalizing designs and getting prepared for permitting. They are going to be calling it the Baker Brook Apartments because it will be senior, so they want to create some visual separation for folks going to that as opposed to the, the normal Tri-Town. But I would expect that once construction season rolls around, we'll, we'll probably be seeing them again real soon to wrap that project up.
I have a question on that.
Yep.
Didn't they have design plans presented to us when they requested the change?
I don't think they had full permitting architectural plans drawn. I think they had.
It's site plan.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, the site plan's done and that's approved, but they, they're, when I say permitting, I mean building permitting. They're, they're finalizing all of their construction plans.
So they're not going to come back to us?
No, no, they don't need to come see you again.
Okay, thank you.
It was more of a point of information. I know it's a big project and it's been going on for, ooh, over a decade now, so it'll be.
It'll be nice to see that wrap up and, and be finished.
And people will be happy to see this additional senior housing.
Correct. MRPC, you all received a copy of the DLTA, District Local Technical Assistance Packet. We can propose a project. The town manager will be submitting a request for the remainder of, excuse me, the, the ADA transition plan for the town. Some of this has been funded through DLTA in the past. They did apply for a Mass Office of Disability Grant to finish the plan, and they did not receive that grant. But there's a incredibly high probability of them getting the DLTA to do so. We can submit multiple projects, but it would be up to the board if there was something that they felt jumped out at them as, as a project that would be, that would fit into that. Anybody?
I didn't see anything.
No, I didn't either.
I mean, it's a pretty narrow focus on a lot of it and, you know, outside of specific planning tasks, I would say that coming up, it would be to our benefit, I think, in the next round to work with them to update our housing production plan. I also think that that's not something we need to worry about right now. And this, this funding has been coming around annually for more than ten years now.
And what is the cap on the fund?
I don't think there's a cap on the funds. I think they try and distribute them geographically in a somewhat even way, so I don't think they'd give Lunenburg half of their funding.
Right.
And we have had two projects funded in the past, but they do shoot to service each community individually with one project and.
Is there a ballpark figure?
It might be twelve or fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay. I do have something in mind. We had the Baker Bill last year or the year before awarded us not less than one million dollars for free projects, streetscapes and facades in the center, specifically stated Lancaster, Leominster, and Main Street. The second one was the L and M service station. Not quite sure why, because it's not owned by the town, so I've heard. And the third one was a rez community kitchen.
This is the bond bill funding?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So would, would it be within their scope to provide a preliminary layout? Kind of a, an idea, something to apply for that?
Apply for?
Apply for distribution of the, some of the funds.
No, I mean, that's political wrangling, really.
Well, we need a plan to present, so could they prepare that?
Could they prepare the plan?
For, for which of those?
Any, all, either?
Well, I, and I, I only ask because, I mean, the streetscaping, I think, would be the one they would be most likely to be able to assist with. The community kitchen, while I don't know that interest is necessarily cool discussion about it certainly seems to have, and that's a much more internal architecturally, you know, relevant design, whereas MRPC doesn't have anybody that would do something like that.
Sure.
Streetscape would fit into their transportation section. And then the L and M gas station, we have received twenty thousand dollars from MRPC through their brownfield program to perform a phase-two study over there.
Oh, excellent.
So I expect that the town manager will, again, inform the selectman tomorrow night of that if she hasn't already. We've performed or are performing the phase-one, so we don't own it, but we're moving through the process of identifying what, if any, contaminants are there.
Okay.
So I can look at this again and I can talk to MRPC and see if that's something that would, would fit into that.
Okay.
Specifically, what was it? Can you, it's found for the streetscapes?
Streetscapes and building facades.
Okay. For what areas?
Lancaster, Leominster, I think, I think it might say.
Pretty much downtown.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the, the village district.
Yep.
Okay.
And I just happened to notice that with three hours ago, town of Lunenburg made a public announcement that we are thrilled to announce we have been awarded two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars in complete streets construction funding for Mass DOT.
Congratulations to us.
Woo-hoo! Which would add nicely to streetscapes and building facades and up to a million dollars from the state. So this is a quarter million. That's not bad from DOT. And they get specific, so.
Yeah, let me talk to MRPC and the town manager and see if this all fits in with, with what they would allow us to do with the DLTA.
Okay. And then also possibly mention the combination of the quarter million dollars from DOT?
Yes, yeah. The leveraging of.
Perfect. All right, so that was the end of the director's items?
No, that was, that was the first.
DLTA?
Oh, that was the second, I'm sorry. Then we're on to the.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is no thing.
There's a, a little space there.
Yep.
I don't think we're going to find MJTC board representative tonight. And then open space, I handed you all the open space bylaw, the, the model bylaw, the last time we met.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone's had a chance to read through it. Anybody has thoughts on if it's something they would like to move forward in pursuing?
Definitely something that I'd like to talk about more, but honestly, I'm not prepared to talk about it tonight. I didn't know it was on.
Okay, so we'll make that its own item? And again, if we haven't read it, I don't want to sit here and try and read it and talk about it. But if you've looked at it and you think it's an interesting idea, I can go through and I can take out all the blue blocks and sort of try and make it look like what a bylaw might look like for us with some of my recommendations or suggestions on some of the things they're highlighting and calling out, and I can have that for you and we can have the discussion of the two or of it conceptually. Is that?
Good to me.
Sound like a reasonable way to move forward?
Mm-hmm.
We'll shoot for February for that, to get that together. Again, this is going to take a little while, so I expect this could be fall or, or spring of, of twenty-one before we get to it. The tree clearing bylaw, I sent out the air bylaw to board. I, you know, I think that the discussion we had last time, and I don't know if you've had a chance to read that, sort of lends itself to, I think, the reaction we got for some of the earthville stuff at town meeting. I think there's a lot of benefit to it. I don't know what the board thinks and how supportive you are of trying to move something like that.
I had mentioned it numerous times, I believe, as a tree clearing bylaw, and I misrepresented it. It's actually an earth disturbance.
Correct, yeah. It's a little bit of both.
Right. Right. I mean, I would be in favor of, the, the big thing that stood out to me is that they specifically regulated clearcutting of trees and forested property. We, we currently have nothing as a protection for that. I mean, I, I understand the mixed feelings about regulating private property versus huge swaths of land getting cleared in town. I understand that that can be contentious. However, I think that if we have applications that require two-hundred-foot of naturally existing undisturbed vegetation and prior to an application they clearcut the land, there's a little bit of a disconnect. And, you know, I'm, I'm the last person to say, no, take the landowner's rights away, but the landowners are not necessarily the citizens that live here. They often are corporations that buy land and develop it. And I think that would be the target of something, looking at limiting clearing on, on private property. That's just my take on it. I would be more than open to anybody's input on that.
I mean, the thing that rolls around in my mind is the earth removal bylaw was not shot down sixty, forty. It was shot down like ninety against ten percent four. And I think there's just, in general, there's a sentiment amongst people against regulation of any sort. I think people are, right now, in the political environment we live in, I think people are more concerned about personal property rights and don't want to see more layers of regulation. I understand the intent, but I also realize from my own experience working in the landscaping and construction industry, it isn't as if there is no protections against these actions. In other words, if you're going to disturb more than one acre of space, you're going to need a stormwater permit. So the, there, or if you're near a wetland, you're going to go through conservation. And I realize some people do take advantage of, you know, forestry regulations and do clearcutting under those circumstances, but I don't know. I, I just, I don't think the town's necessarily in favor of it. I just, I don't think the town's necessarily in favor of it. You know, and as a board, I think there's other things we can focus on that would have a better impact in, on the community overall. Master planning being probably number one.
Right, yeah, I would agree with that.
And so, I'd just like to see us focus on that stuff and worry about the things that we know are problems, so...
You bet.
I would tend to agree with Tanner.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll put that by the wayside?
Yep, back burner.
You have in front of you, or in your folder, a copy of the earth removal bylaw with the earth fill portions taken out. So, I think that we should move the earth fill, or the earth removal only, to the annual town meeting, because the earth removal bylaw that we have now isn't sufficient for earth removal as it exists. We can work on the regs, and I can have them for you for the next meeting, to have the whole package, regs and bylaw together. We have time to get input from current permit holders. And, you know, I had a gentleman in my office just last week who owns a farm, and, "Oh, well, I keep getting water in my barn, and I wanna start taking some earth off." And, you know, I said, "How much?" And he said, "Well, I don't know, a couple hundred yards." And I said, "Well, you're gonna need an earth removal permit." "What?"
"Only if it goes off-site."
Well, he wants to take it off-site, 'cause he doesn't have anywhere that he wants to use it. He said, "I thought that 500 passed." And I said, "Hmm, it didn't." "Oh, well, I don't wanna get a permit." So, you know, I think there's certainly a lot of people out there looking to move more than 10 yards of earth. And I think the removal portion is certainly an upgrade from what we have. And we're not introduced, if we don't introduce the fill, my hope is that that will smooth some of that tension that was put forward at the last town meeting away. And maybe I'm wrong.
See, I, when I looked at this again, and I was just remembering town meeting, and I think that you hit on one of the points, by taking away filling, but I just made some notes of what I remembered as being additional issues, so... That it's not written in plainer language, easier to understand, right? That you're gonna require an engineer to verify the quantity of earth moved, which equates to additional dollars by anybody who wants anything done, right? That the permit criteria is a bit vague and a little too subjective. There were complaints about the language, you know, neighborhood character, what does that mean?
Mm-hmm.
Impacts on natural environment, of course. Anytime you remove a large quantity of earth, it has an impact on the natural environment, you know, items like that. And then, just that the, again, about property rights, that the, it was a bit of a overreach and infringed on property owners' rights. So, I heard all those things kind of loud and clear at town meeting. So, I just, I wouldn't be comfortable putting something forth unless it at least attempted to address some more of these.
So, I can answer a couple. I mean, property rights, we're actually increasing property rights with this, because we're, it's gonna be 50 times what they could take out currently. 'Cause right now, it's 10, so...
We need to find a way to...
And I, you know what, I'll, I'll go back and I'll, I'll do a presentation, and everyone can sit through a presentation.
Well, and I think that's important. That was one of my comments, is, 'cause I was trying to compare what we're proposing compared to the existing earth removal bylaw. And the big thing that I think is missing is the current earth removal bylaw articulates all of the regulations. It's not two different documents. It's currently one. And I think that without having the regulations so that people understand what is changing, and I think we have to have an existing regulation slide and a proposed change, because I don't think people understand those changes.
You know, and I understand when people say it's not written in plain language, but it's a legal document, and you can't, and, you know, we had a board member who said, "Oh, well, a seventh grader should be able to read it and understand it." Well, no, that's, you, you can't write legal documents that way. It doesn't, and he and I have had this discussion several times. I can...
I mean, that one I don't necessarily agree with. I just remember...
Yeah, and I, yes.
...an item, 'cause this is pretty standard language for any...
Yes.
Earth removal.
And, you know, the, the criteria, we can, we can brush up the criteria. That's, and I, you know, I'm always cautious about being too black and white about criteria, because, you know, especially when you get into a homeowner and impact on the environment, it can, of course, there's gonna be an impact on the environment, but if you say, if it can't be A, B, C, and D, and the mitigation for C is $100,000 worth of work, for a homeowner who's only taking out 650 cubic yards, that can be problematic. Whereas, if that mitigation for someone like a Keatings is still $100,000, that's just the cost of doing business, because they're pulling out hundreds of thousands of yards constantly. But I can, I can do some, some poking, and I can, I can work on that. I mean, we have plenty of time to noodle around with this and, and get it to a place where it addresses some of those issues. The engineering certification, I mean, we can do something about that.
And where is that located? 'Cause I'm trying to find it.
I, I don't remember saying an engineer had to...
I don't either, and that's where I'm trying to find, because it says that we have to, they have to provide the estimate of the anticipated annual volume, estimate of the amount of material to be removed, the amount of material to be left, and I think we have to have that, but whether it's an engineer or whether it's a homeowner, I don't think...
Well, and I...
There's an estimate, and then there's a verification of what's actually removed, right? So...
No, no, 'cause the, the idea is that the permit is only required when you remove more than 500. So, if they come to us and say, "Well, we plan to take 650," and they take 675, but they're, or 750, and their closure plan is the same as what they proposed to us, I don't know that the board would have an, say, "Oh, well, you removed too much earth." As long as what they're, they're doing at the end matches up with what they were originally proposing.
Well, I guess my immediate reaction would be if we still have the language in there about groundwater, depth of groundwater.
And that's in the regs.
Yeah.
So...
See, I think that's important.
And, and the thing that, you know, Marissa brought up a good point in terms of the engineering costs and so on, and I would add to that, not only the cost, but the timeline. I mean, if you've got a project, you know, playing devil's advocate, if you've got a project homeowner says, "Okay, well, I wanna flatten out my backyard so I can put a swimming pool in," and they come to you in April, and you say, "Well, I can't get you a swimming pool permit, because you need to remove earth, and you gotta go through this process." They won't have a pool that year. Simple as that. There's no way, especially right now with the construction industry being busy, that they're gonna find an engineer, do the full package, get in front of us, get our approval, and then get the project done. So, I, I don't know. It's, it's a challenge, because it just doesn't math out, and especially when it comes to 500 yards. I mean, you could easily spend $5,000, if not $10,000, in engineering.
Well, I think that's what we've gotta talk about in the regulations, because if it's 500 cubic yards, maybe we don't require an engineering certificate. But I think that's the kind of thing we have to talk about, and we have to have decided before we move forward with this. So, I think it's really important that we look more closely at the regulations, because this bylaw is tied to those regulations. And I think without going to town meeting, without completely flushing out the regulations with public input, it's gonna fail.
Mm-hmm. And also, you'd need to do a word search, 'cause in the purpose, there's landfilling and/or filling twice mentioned.
Okay.
I didn't look through the rest of the document, but applicant to be removed or fill to be placed. I mean, 'cause that's the intent, right, to get rid of...
Yeah, and I did, and I, I did do a word search, and it's...
Yeah, 140-6, isn't, there's fill there also in the title.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the other ones to be clarified, I know, under the general limitations, will result in the transportation of materials in such manners to cause traffic congestion, dust, spillage, noise, or other nuisances or hazards, particularly on residential streets. One of the comments was, "Have you ever seen a dump truck?" 'Cause it's basically the definition of a dump truck.
Yeah.
So, just refining some of this language.
Well, and I think, at the end of the day, we really need to look at the yardage. I mean, I was pretty adamant about at least 1,000 yards, and it didn't fly. I get it, but at the end of the day, a lot of the comments at town meeting were rotated around that topic in terms of, "Okay, I'm gonna cut a driveway in for my new house to meet current standards and slope," and this, a lot of times, you're moving a lot of material. That's just...
Well, and I, and that was one of my, my suggestions, under the exemptions, we exempt something with a building permit.
Right.
There was an amendment on the floor for driveways, and I, I think that's a completely reasonable exemption. My recommendation is that it be pulled out as its own line item, because it's not covered, driveway permits aren't covered under the CMR that covers building permits. They're a local permit that we issue, and so, we can exempt those that are permitted through that process, and that would eliminate some of that, that issue. Or are you thinking you don't wanna exempt those?
I, I think there needs to be less regulation in general, so I would support any exemption. I guess the under, thing that I immediately pick up on is, okay, you provide an exemption, is it the intent of this board to provide an exemption that, okay, if we're protecting groundwater, and we don't want people within four feet of the water table, you've granted an exception for this driveway? I mean...
Yes.
You can't exempt the activity from only half of the bylaw. Right, and then, so, I don't know. But I agree that anything with a building permit, there's some oversight there in terms of the building commissioner or inspector coming out, looking at the site, making sure the driveway complies, and generally, the site is being developed in a cautious manner, so...
So, just, just to refresh, Butterfly Lane, did they, were they required during earth removal?
No, they were not.
Because it was involved with a single...
Because, no, because it was a subdivision permitted by the board select, or by the planning board.
So, because it was a subdivision, they weren't required?
Correct, so, and this exemption's in, in the one currently, earth removal within the right-of-way for a subdivision road that has been approved by the planning board, where there is already a bond in place with the town to ensure performance. I don't think that's the exact wording of what it is now, but that exemption is in place.
Okay. So, I guess, I guess the point of that question was, earth, earth removal with the intent of removing valuable material, typically, your valuable material is going to be well-sorted fines and gravels, sands and gravels. The angle of, it's, it's not gonna support a one-to-one slope. And so, I'm looking here at 140-3B, no, C2. No greater than a one-to-one slope shall exist, and no closer than 10 feet. So, if it was, if it was a gravel removal and it was 20 feet deep, it's going to encroach over the property line very quickly, I would think.
Or it limits them to how far they can remove.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, right, at the end of the day, I mean, when they're finished, it'll hold there for a little while, but it, it, actually, it should slump, but I guess, I guess it's just understanding that it's not all blasting material, and it's not...
No, no, it's not.
So, I mean, if you're, if you're digging in sand, you're not gonna be able to get a 45-degree angle.
No, for any length of time.
When it's dry. If it's wet, maybe for a little while, right? I don't know, just something to look at.
Well, I will shoot for next meeting or first meeting in February for a brush-up on this.
Okay.
In the regulations?
Yes. Stormwater. So, about two years ago, we moved the stormwater out of the zoning bylaw and into the general bylaw?
Yeah, it was about, it was just before our permit.
So, now, we need to update the bylaw to comply with the current MS4 permit. So, what we have in front of us is a set of recommended language and standards from our MS4 consultant, as well as some questions to start updating this bylaw. The hope would be that we would put this on for spring or fall at the latest, to be able to comply with our permit requirements. I mean, some of these are general questions, how, you know, do we still want 10 copies? And some of them are a little more...
Okay, so these are comments from the consultant?
Correct.
I was wondering who these were from.
And then...
And who was the consultant?
CEI, Comprehensive Environmental Mental Incorporated, and the gentleman who did these comments is named Nick Christofori.
Now, is this the same consultant that's working with the stormwater task force?
Yes, yes. And this is part of, having this bylaw as a requirement of our Phase 2 permit...
Right.
And having it comply with the 2018 permit is also redundantly part of that permit. So, essentially, what, what changes is the standards on retention and volumes and best management practices. So, there's a large block of blue texts that is some cross-out and some insertion, and that it would get us to a place of, of compliance with the, the federal mandates. The majority of the remainder of the bylaw fits what's currently required.
So, the 10 copies, sounds like it's for a departmental review?
Mm-hmm.
And further down, it says the SPGA shall distribute to Concom DPW Building?
Yes. So, we can, we can roll back the number of copies.
Well, we, we want five for the, for the board?
Yes, so there'd be five for the board, so it's eight. So, I mean, we get 10, one goes into the file, so, I mean, really, functionally, we take nine and use nine. So, the 10th was just an additional.
Town manager, land use director, I mean, it's not, it's one more than we actually need.
Mm-hmm.
So...
So, I would say, yes, we still want 10 copies.
That's, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any, anybody disagree with that?
No, I think that makes sense.
The next question, all of these, all the time, I think, yes.
Yeah, we do, we do send them to them all the time.
Yes.
That fee schedule is also something that we don't currently have in the bylaw, if I'm not mistaken.
I think we do have to talk about that, though.
We do. Just looking to see if we actually.
On the first comment where he asks, you know, are we going to require it as blanket cover in the entire town? Just those areas that drain into our system.
Mm-hmm. I'm in favor of covering the entire town. We're only required to cover the areas within the MS4, but that gets a little squirrely.
Well, I guess my first question would be, how big of a differential? Like, is our MS?
It's probably about 35 to 40% of the town that's urbanized area.
Okay.
But that's for 2010.
Correct, and it's going to change at some point.
Every 10 years?
Yeah, it's part of the census.
So, the first, the first one was, I think, in 2000, and then in 2010, so we're getting ready to change again, and it was, it was more than a 50% increase, and it's based on amount of impervious.
Mm-hmm.
And so, the entirety of our MS4 is not necessarily collecting stuff from the permit area. The permit area is the regulated area by the MS4, but our, our system extends to collect water from.
We have system outside the urbanized area.
Right, and if it drains.
That this permit doesn't cover, but that we manage and maintain. So, by requiring the entire town to meet the requirements of this bylaw, what happens is, as the urbanized area expands, we don't have to keep amending the bylaw, we are already covered because we're there.
Well, and the key is where it drains. So, if the stormwater system is outside of the MS4, but yet drains to the MS4, it's still subject.
Correct.
So, that's his whole question, is who determines where it drains?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I'm just coming at it from the perspective of, if the MS4 permit covers 50% of the town in its entirety, meaning not only what the permit is.
Yeah.
But any incoming flows, then we're essentially going to make 50% of the applicants theoretically go through a process that they don't really need to go through?
It'll improve our stormwater all throughout the town, regardless of it's required or not.
And I don't think it matters if you're in the regulated area or not, you still need a construction general permit from EPA if you disturb more than an acre.
Yeah.
And historically, what we've required is essentially a copy of the SWIP that you file with EPA, so we're not like, great, you did this thing for EPA, now here's this whole other set of paperwork. We, we say, you know, just, just give us the SWIP, and usually, what I say is, give us two or three full and give us the first exec, the executive summary that runs through all the nuts and bolts, that's what you folks get. I always have the full SWIP if you want to read it, but really, I don't, I know engineers who don't want to read those.
Mm-hmm.
But they're there, and we have the information, but it's more, and the, the projects that we've done under this bylaw to this point have all been residential projects, A&R lots where there was five or six or seven lots, and so, the final design is usually grassed swales and directed water. We haven't, I mean, we haven't had a major commercial development come to town anytime recently that wasn't redevelopment, so they're not disturbing, they're disturbing already disturbed lands. You know, Walmart would have been like this thing in all of its glory, but, you know, that was back before this was anything to worry about. So, I, no, I don't think we're putting anybody through anything that they.
Don't.
We're giving them an extra bureaucratic step, but it's, with a series of information they will already have submitted somewhere. So, and again, I don't expect a in-depth discussion of this, just, this is what it is, we need to review it, and I would hope we'd be able to talk about it at the next meeting.
So, a question on D5, which is on the second, it's the second printed page, but the third page, basically, comment NC4.
Yep.
Now, it says, "Do you want to add something like the following?"
The fees, A through E, are not in our existing bylaw. I'm not sure why they're.
So, they need to be blue, right?
They should be blue.
Okay.
So, I did review this, and I looked at Sterling and Canton, and I had some comments and some thoughts, I can just send them to you.
Sure. And what I'll do is, I'll make copies, and when we talk about it at the next meeting, I'll have copies for everybody to see.
You could distribute her comments prior to the meeting, couldn't you?
No. It's considered input, it's deliberation.
Yep.
She's providing her thoughts, and doing so outside of a public meeting is.
So, what about Marissa's comments on the previous thing?
That was a big dust-up, I messed up.
I understand. And if someone complains.
I thought it was, I thought it was supposed to send it to everybody, not just Adam.
Yeah, you can't.
Okay.
I realize that, he corrected me.
Well, doesn't the fact actually occur when there's input coming back the other way?
But once you, once you share your thoughts with the entire board, you've created deliberation. And, I mean, deliberate, yes, you're right, in, in, in logical, practical thought, deliberation can't happen unless there's two people discussing. In open meeting law?
Open meeting.
Deliberation is one-sided.
Right.
And, and two-sided, so, once you, once you do that, it, it travels into that realm.
But you could, if I were to send you my comments, and Marissa and Tanner were to send you the, and Matt was, you could compile a document.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, yes.
So, yeah.
I could compile an input document, and I could, what I would probably do is just take this and put a series of text boxes inserted, these are the comments for this section.
You know, can we, we can't do that, though, right? You can't, no, because that's deliberation, so we can't comment.
Correct.
Which is just crazy, but.
Well, the idea is that those discussions, that those discussions happen here, as opposed to having everybody decide, oh, yeah, 1,000 yards is great.
Yeah.
And not, people not seeing what that discussion was. And again, what I always say is, please, 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 if you have input and you've read it beforehand, if you send it to me, I can make sure everybody has a copy of it.
Yep.
And I can theoretically have some answer or alternative so that we can discuss that as well, and it's not bumping off another week. And, and what it would, it hopefully expedites everything. I, I understand people want to make sure their comments are at the public meeting, and everybody hears what they say, and that's why the compilation document helps, because then everyone can follow along, and, oh, well, you know, Tanner said this, and we haven't talked about that.
Mm-hmm.
So, it just, it, it helps everybody organize thoughts.
Yeah. So, just, you know, the gist of my comments in reviewing it, I like the regulations in Sterling and Canton specifically because they try to put more emphasis on low-impact development, and that's something I would like to see, so most of my comments are more about really pushing more low-impact development. So, I'll, I'll put together the document and send it to you. So, decreasing impervious surfaces, that kind of thing.
Okey-dokey. And then, my last thing is, I sent you all copies of some proposed updates to the rules and regulations.
Yeah, I was very confused by this. So, that's this document, this.
There's three documents.
Article 2 general provisions?
So, Article 2 general provisions is a, an alteration of our definitions as they currently exist in the rules and regulations, with additions and subtractions as highlighted in red. Then, 32532, and this new fancy-looking document go together, they're, they're the.
New fancy-looking document, oh, this one?
Yes. This is my proposed Section 3 for the bylaw.
To replace this.
To replace, no, to replace this.
So, this is current?
This is current. Correct.
Oh, okay.
And then, this is a mashup document, because I, because there was so much in the, the A&R that I just wanted to write it again, and with the definitions, there was a number that I felt we needed to keep, so I tried to do a mashup, and ultimately, this, Section 2, the definition, Article 2, will look like this in format. So, I think I probably need to give a little bit of explanation.
I guess my first question is, why? Like, where is this, is the goal?
Well, our, is to rewrite our subdivision rules and regulations. They're from 2007, I think, was the last update.
And they're horrible to follow through.
They're, they're really disjointed, and I think the majority of what you'd expect to be in there is in there, it's just, good luck finding it.
Mm-hmm.
So, what I want to do is make it more linear and easier to follow. So, Section 1 currently is authority and purpose, and that wouldn't really change in, in my proposed update. It's going to still be authority and purpose, it's a pretty low-key thing. Section 2 currently is called general provisions, and it's mostly definitions, and my proposal would be to make it all definitions.
All right, I'm very confused, where are you?
Yeah, so, you didn't print the existing 1 and 2, or you could.
No, I didn't print the existing 1.
Okay.
I didn't. I left it out, I left it out because nothing really changes.
Okay.
I, I have a note of, I, I've sort of sketched out what I think it should look like.
Okay.
So, if you go to the last printed page of the last sheet of paper of the, the red-lined version, you'll see I've got all this stuff crossed out.
Mm-hmm.
Because this is a bunch of stuff that does belong in the rules and regs, but I believe it belongs in other sections, and it belongs in, with other things. So, you know, the proven not required, approved plan required, well, that, if anywhere, goes in the administration, and can be incorporated everywhere else. Of course, if we, you want to do something, you need to have an approved plan. Fees, I'm proposing we put a whole Section 8 together that is just fees, it talks about the filing fees, any inspection fees, 53G, any of that stuff, and have a section where people can just go and find the fees. Compliance with zoning, that's, that's outlined in the definition further up, and would be outlined in, in administration, I believe, as well. So, I, I think that what we have is, is information that's in the wrong places, and I think we can contemporize some of that information, especially some of our design standards. This gives us the option to fold in all of the complete street stuff that we have approved, we can start to look at introducing more green infrastructure as part of the rules and regs, having the ability to do both, conventional or low-impact, depending on, on what's appropriate at the place. So, my proposal is to take Section 2 and make it just definitions. And then, Section 3 is currently both A&R plans and definitive and preliminary subdivision plans. I feel they should be separated, so Section 3 would become A&R plans, Section 4 would become preliminary and definitive subdivision plans.
And we don't have that?
No, you don't, I, I haven't, I haven't done those yet.
Okay.
Because I think it's easier to sort of nail down each section in concept, and then talk about, and, and talk about the text, and then move on to the next. Chapter 5 would be design standards. If you'd like me to put the whole document together, I can, it just is, it's, I've done it before that way, and it's daunting to get a 95-page document and say, all right, let's go through this. So, 5 would be design standards, Chapter 6 would be required improvements for subdivisions, so it lays out, once you have the approved subdivision, how do you have to construct it, and what's the, the requirements for that? Chapter 7 would be administration, all of the, you know, who files what, when, where, how, that kind of stuff. 8 would be fees, and then 9 would be all the appendices, any design drawings we have, any forms we have, subdivision sections, that kind of stuff.
I'm sorry, Adam, I don't, I don't understand, are all three of these documents linked together, like, two of them are existing in?
No. Yes, yeah, so, this is existing and proposed for chap, for Section 2.
Article 2.
Article 2.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what is the 325, I thought that was Section 325?
It's, it's Chapter 325 of the Code of Lunenburg.
Okay.
Section 3.2.
3.2.
So, the 325 is like the 250 in zoning, everything in the rules and regs is going to be 325.
Did we talk about this at the last meeting? Or have we talked about this at all?
No, we haven't talked about this at all.
Okay, so, it needs to be very clear, I think, I mean.
What I'll do is, I'll, I'll write a proposal out on what we're, what we're doing.
Glad I wasn't the only one confused.
No, this is, this, and this isn't the first time either. I mean, I'm going to back up a couple of years, it was shortly after you got here, you didn't provide us with a revised final draft for town meeting until, like, the week before town meeting, and you ended up removing the description, the mismatched description, albeit, I'll give you that, for the outlying district. There was, there was references to conservation, there was references to agriculture, rather than looking back to find out what those references meant, they just got excluded, and I wasn't comfortable with it at all, and the current chair was not either. Maybe I was the current chair, I don't remember, but, stuff like this.
Well, this is the first introduction of this.
Okay, okay.
We've done nothing with the rules and regulations since 2007.
All right. Yeah, well, there's, there's a lot of stuff we haven't done much with, but, and it is all, as you say, and as I agree, a hot mess.
Well, and, and this, the, the rules and regs have, like I said, most of the information in there, it's just really difficult to pinpoint it when it comes time to do so.
Mm-hmm.
So, I want to organize it logically, and I, I think definitions, we talk about it a lot, I want to make sure that we retain the ones that we have that are important, but also be thoughtful about contemporizing them.
Okay, well, now I at least understand the context, and I think we can look at it.
Well, and then what I'll do is, I'll write a memo outlining what we just talked about.
Very good.
And, you know, I, I can work to sort out the differences between those two documents that are, are separate.
Okay. All right, notices, communications were scanned to us. All right, so January 27, we have a public hearing for 1325 Mass Ave.
So, stormwater permit, interestingly enough.
Okay.
For, is it, what kind of development is, is it?
It's a gravel removal operation.
Very interesting.
1325, where's the nearest intersection?
Uh, it is two up from Townsend Hall.
Towards the schools.
Yes. It's the, I don't even know what style house you would call it, up on the hill, it's the house that used to have the horses, kinda next to the puppet theater.
Oh, two towards the primaries.
Two towards the primaries.
Two towards the primaries.
Yeah, just, just up the hill from the swamp.
Okay.
And the house that they've been fixing for the past two and a half years.
Oh.
Yeah. The Blue Bayou House, it's house.
All right, and that's the only sample?
Famously known as the ugly house.
That's the only thing that we current, have as far as appointments.
All right, and nothing for Feb. 10 and 24?
Nope. I think we just loaded those both up, uh, with our discussions this evening.
Yes. Mr. Chair, on the ongoing items, can I just circle around back again to master plan? So, we're looking at the population projections, but I thought we had prioritized our, our items. Have you thought about starting to work on an RFP, or did you want to wait on the population?
I want to find out if we can get engineering, if there's more than one engineering firm or an engineering firm that can do the population projections, I'd like it to all be in one RFP rather than sending them out separately.
Okay.
And I think, uh, if it's not, if we use the Donahue Institute, they're a public institution, so I think that there's a relief from 30B, 'cause it's public to public, uh, and that would just, that would change that just a little bit.
Okay, I, I guess I'd like to understand, I don't know a lot about the Donahue Institute, and I'd like to understand, you know, the master plans that they've done and stuff. I know, I know we've looked at a lot of the RFPs that other communities have done.
Oh, I wouldn't recommend them for, for anything other than the population.
Other than the population?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they would be welcome to bid on-
Okay.
-the other part, but I, where they have a existing contract with Mass DOT and they do population projections and they understand where the shortcomings are, I think they, they offer an opportunity to-
So, I guess I'm confused why we don't start drafting the RFP for the other components, because I'm not, because I'm not sure that the population, I mean, I think it's its own entity, so I guess I would, because, because, you know, I'd like to get moving on it, I mean, we keep talking about the master plan and we've gone through the prioritization, and I'd like to start really looking at an RFP at least, 'cause I think it's gonna take us several meetings for us to get through that.
Okay, I can, I can start on that.
Did we ever send any communication to the Board of Selectmen?
We did. Uh, I sent it over today. I've been sort of beating my head over how to send it to them and be polite and not, not make it harder to, to work with them, so I, it, I, I wrote six drafts between our last meeting and today, and I, I think I finally settled on one that, that got the point across.
Can you send us a copy?
I can.
Um, with respect to the RFP, do we know how many items we want to address?
I thought we had done that.
Yeah, I thought we talked about it, I just can't remember if we-
You had two.
Two.
It was, uh, facilities and services-
Yep.
And, uh, land use.
Land use, yeah.
And I guess my only comment along those lines is, I think there was a pretty clear consensus among the board members that population was kind of a driving factor.
Correct, and we can't do anything until we have population numbers on those.
So, depending on what the cost of that is-
Yeah.
We'll-
Say what we can do.
See what, what's-
Give us input on the rest of it.
Now, I remember you had asked us to come up with four-
Correct.
And I had only two, but everybody else had four. Do we only, we only settled on two?
You settled on two, uh, with the thought that the population projections would have a significant impact on everything and, and there's a cost associated with that.
Okay. Very good.
Um, and I guess under ongoing items, the solar thing, I had the opportunity to talk to a solar developer. We were asked to bid some seeding on a site that they're working on, and I just kinda took the opportunity to pick their brain in terms of, uh, facility sizes and that type of stuff. And I guess, um, the Massachusetts Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, who basically regulates the SMART program, is currently in their comment period for the next set of regulations, and a lot of those updates will have big impacts. They're looking at doing a deductor, um, on what you get for your energy credits for clearing open space, so if you have a parcel of land that hasn't been developed, it's either a hayfield, or it's woods, or, um, whatever, you basically get penalized for putting a facility in those situations. Um, they're looking at doing an incentive for pollinator habitats, which we talked about, um, but there is a certification cost and all of that. And I feel like if we kinda watch how those regs shake out, that's gonna really have a huge impact on what we see coming to town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my understanding of it right now is, and again, this isn't written in stone, but if they adopt the regulations that they're thinking about, the, um, penalty that they're gonna assess for clearing open space will essentially make the projects unviable.
And it's for clearing and for using natural space?
Exactly, so the, the goal is to, um, promote, uh, solar on brownfields, buildings, rooftops, that type of stuff, um, and heavily penalize the clearing of trees or using agricultural land. Um, I think people are really concerned about the agricultural component of things going away. Um, and so I think a lot of the things that we're talking about in terms of buffer sizes and parcel sizes and all that type of stuff, we may, um-
Rethink that.
-basically be cut out of the game, essentially, because if these regulations are adopted, then it will no longer be financially viable to build the facility, and at that point, the problem's, quote-unquote, solved.
And sort of to follow up on that, I did talk to Town Council about, uh, the canopies. And, and he was in agreement that they are structures, uh, but he said, he sees a lot of communities include them in bylaws specifically, just as a matter of being very explicit that the community accepts and allows that, so that they don't fall into a gray area and someone doesn't kinda get into the, oh, well, can we do it and, and have somebody, you know, have it turn into a negotiation or a conversation? So, he said, yeah, you know, it probably does fit within that exemption, but calling them out specifically just sends that clear message that, yeah, we, you can do that, we accept that and it's reasonable. Um, you know, and frankly, I would think someplace like Walmart would make a ton of money and, and take some of the pressure off, but it sounds like the pressure might be taken off anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We'll see.
All right, so we jumped into the ongoing item of solar energy systems, off-street parking and loading, master plan, we touched upon a little bit. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, public comment?
I do have a public comment.
Stand down there?
No, I don't. Well, this, this is a town public announcement. Uh, the ADA Right-of-Way Transition Plan that has been worked on by the MRPC and the Board of Selectmen, uh, has been completed, and the draft is on the town website, uh, it's up for review and comment. The Board of Selectmen will be holding a public hearing on February 11th at 7:05 in this room to review and make any alterations necessary, uh, and they have extended an invitation to the planning board to join them for that.
Nice, and that's the result of our walkability studies?
That's February 11th.
That is February 11th. Uh, it is not the result of the walkability study, the walkability study's created the Walkability Report, which is also published. Um, the, the Right-of-Way Transition Plan is, the walkability study builds off of it, and it's identifying public spaces that are not adequately accessible within the rights of way, and creating a plan by which to transition them from not accessible to accessible. So, some of the items that were talked about during the walkability study were accessibility and connectivity and are mirrored in the Right-of-Way Transition Plan, but it's not the same plan.
Okay. Super.
That was at what time?
7:05.
7:05.
Which means they start their meeting at 7 and do their public comment and they get into that.
You want to look at the agenda, 'cause they put stuff on at different times.
Okay. Well, if the hearing, if the planning board's been invited, do we need to post if we're going?
Not if, no, 'cause it's a public, it's not a, it's not a joint meeting, I don't believe. I'll, I'll verify, but-
Okay.
If, if it needs to be posted, we'll, we'll make sure it gets posted.
Okay.
Uh, and worst-case scenario is two of you show up and we don't actually have a meeting and Marger doesn't have to do minutes.
Well, well, also, another, another worst-case scenario is that three or more of us show up and we just can't deliberate.
We can comment.
Correct, you can comment.
We can comment, we can comment?
Yeah, yeah. We can public comment as individuals.
And you're, you're allowed to attend other boards' meetings as a board, um, as long as you're not deliberating to come to a final conclusion.
Okay.
But again, if it's something that-
I just want to make sure-
We need to post, we'll make sure we get it posted.
Okay.
Super. Uh, board comments, concerns? Nothing?
Nope.
We are happy?
Beautiful.
I'm gonna jump to conclusions. We're not concerned.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion about adjournment?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And no pile of plans to sign.
What is on the agenda?